It's seven o'clock, so we will call this meeting to order. Jen, our meeting notes verification? Okay, for our pledge, Sean, would you like to lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And Bob Minard, how about our mission statement, please?
To serve with passion, to ignite creativity, innovation, and excellence.
Okay, and roll call, we've got six of the seven board members with one excused and one student rep excused, and Ryan, your team is here, it looks like.
Yep, I have one person excused this evening.
Okay. Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
All right, a motion and second on the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will roll right into our connection with the community and our art department presentations. All right, art department, take it away.
All right, well, thank you so much for letting us be here. Well, we're gonna start up here on this end, so the three artists that have their work here, if you could kind of get yourselves ready to come on up. First of all, we want to thank the board and administration for choosing artwork and taking their time to do this today. We really appreciate it more than we can say in words, so thank you before we get started. But I'd like to start with Callie Hayden first, who was chosen by Catherine Griffin. So Callie, if you could come on up.
So I chose Callie's work. Her title of the art is "A Bowl of Sunshine," and Sunshine used to be a childhood nickname of mine, so it brought back a fond memory, and the art is beautiful, so thank you very much.
Up next, we have Sidney Quick, who was chosen by Bob Minard.
Well, they took a picture of this beautiful ceramic, and it's Dale the Plumber, and the first time I saw it, I was like, oh, that's interesting, and it had this little sliding glass, and I said, well, see if it's open. So the case was open, so I picked this piece up, and this picture, I must tell you, does not do it justice, because if you turn Dale the Plumber around, he has plumber butt. So I thought it was the funniest thing ever, I was laughing so hard. I thought it was a great sense of humor, so that's why I picked it.
Up next, we have Deanna Christensen and Crystal Becker.
All right, so I chose this sculpture because it reminds me of my grandparents' farm. They raised chickens, and ironically, we at our household is getting ten chicks next week, so it just brought back a lot of memories, and then also, it's something that if I saw this in the store, I would totally buy it and put it in my kitchen, so it's wonderful.
All right, up next, we have Parker, who was chosen by Alyssa Harlan.
All right, well, Parker, I loved this piece. Once it went up in the hall, it just kept drawing my eye, the sharp jump in colors, and then the way the water was just perfect down there, it's just like an optical illusion. Is the water coming out? Is it bumped into the bumper like that? I just thought it was so clear, so eye-catching, and something that I would hang in my home, so awesome job.
Up next, we have Skylar Osborne, whose work was chosen by Heidi Horton.
Okay, so I chose Skylar's piece, and I want to look at the name here, "Hidden in Mesmeric Beauty." And this is one where I come in this back door too, and this one caught my eye every day when I walked in. I absolutely love it. It looks like it's textured, but I don't think it is, but it looks like you can touch it, the silkiness of the flowers, and I don't know if those are snakes going through, and then there's a light that just peeks out in the corner. I absolutely love this piece. You can feel it? Okay, yeah, it's just awesome. I did not touch it.
Yeah, we're gonna go this way, thank you. Up next, we have Drew Anderson, who was chosen by Mr. Yeh.
Drew, I just love the photograph here with the smaller figurines and the tube, which is a neat photo, and the title of this piece is "There's Always Light at the End of the Tunnel," and I thought that was very fitting for a senior, but for a neat piece as well.
Up next, we have Anna, Anna Flock, who isn't here, chosen by Officer Riley. I just want to read what Officer Riley had written here. The title of this piece is called Leopard, but Officer Riley writes, "Though a cheetah is depicted, I'm loving the creativity in the way the animal fades into the picture." First, I thought it was copied from the art posters, meaning the art posters for the show, this K-12 show. After talking with Mr. Brown, I learned that the art posters were actually made by copying this piece, so congratulate Anna. Congratulations to Anna, sorry. All right, up next, we have Emily Glumsky, whose piece was chosen by Ryan Reber.
Every year, the most favorite time that I have is being able to walk through the doors and march and seeing all of our student work up in the Hyder Center, and there's always one piece that just seems to jump out, whether it's with the bright colors or, you know, a recreation of a famous painting, and this happens to be Monet's Water Lilies, and I just thought that Emma did such a wonderful job with it, and it kind of popped right away, and so that's why I chose this piece, so nice job.
Up next, we have the photography piece by Philip Gabrielson, whose piece was chosen by Jennifer Larson.
Okay, I chose this piece, Taillight, because it jumped out at me right away, for the number one reason, one of my favorite colors is red, and I really liked the way, the texture of all the lights and the way the different shades of red come through,
Up next, we have the artwork of Emily Graham, chosen by Tiffany Everson. I don't think either are here, but I will read what Tiffany had written about this Van Gogh replication. "You can almost see the movement of the clouds in the sky and the wind moving, the trees and the grass. There are many textures you can see in this painting," so congratulations to Emily Graham. Up next, we have Carolyn Perry, whose work was chosen by Dan Hertz, the Hyder Center director. Dan was unable to make it tonight, but he did say that, he said I could read his thing, so we'll read his thing. "It reminds me of medieval times as well as Dragon's Lair, a great video game from the 1980s," so congratulations. Next piece is a dotted drawing of Darth Vader by Ethan Lehman, chosen by Sean Gavigan. Ethan wasn't able to make it, he's playing ball, but he was...
Of course, of course he is. Yeah, if you look at this, it's all tiny little dots, which is just unbelievable. Ethan's done this once before, and it was a Packer player that sat over there on that wall, and I used to watch during the board meetings, look across and just admire it, and I see this, and it just screams, "I am your father," so it was perfect for me, so really well done, Ethan.
Up next, we have the photography of Jamin Growth, who was chosen by Eric Peterson.
I actually chose this photograph because a long time ago, before we all had a camera in our pockets and computers to look at our photographs, my dad got into 35-millimeter photography, and he used to run around West Salem taking pictures of stuff that most people wouldn't take pictures of, like old train depots and tobacco barns and rusty old barns, so love the photograph. I guess I am. Sorry, with a really stupid look on my face, I'm sure.
The next piece by Brianna Matheson, she's playing softball tonight, she said she regrets she couldn't be here. Due to a clerical error in my behalf, it's chosen by two people for the first time ever. So chosen by Bob Golnick and Julian as well, so who would ever like to go first? That would be great.
Well, first of all, it's actually like a really great piece. I liked it right away. I had a fun time looking around all the different art pieces, this one stuck out to me. I think it's really well done. It's a, I think, a recreation of the Great Wave, and then another thing that stuck out to me is that back, my friends, we used to be in art and did the same thing, that also did a Japanese suspension bridge, and it just brought a lot of good memories of the past, even though that was only like last year, but it was so fun. Well, it's a great art. Congratulations to them.
Yeah, similarly, I did a couple of laps, and this one just jumped off the wall to me, just, I was a fan of the original artist, and just a combination of colors and the crisp lines and a little bit minimalist, and I just thought it was a really neat interpretation of the original.
And up next, we have Danny Laurison's Recreation of the Mona Lisa. Oh, this would be by Sean, yes, sorry.
Yeah, I picked this, I picked this one, obviously because it's a great depiction of the Mona Lisa, Leonardo da Vinci, which is such a well-known artist of our time, and I was watching the lines, and obviously, everybody else is doing the same things I was doing, going through and doing the laps, and it felt like this one was watching me, so it was a fantastic job, so congratulations, Danny.
All right, next, we'll turn it over to Mr. Schroeder.
Hello, I'm gonna apologize right away before I butcher anybody's name, because it's probably gonna happen, sorry, just bad with names. All right, so first up, we have Anna Witt, and her piece was chosen by Emily Clunk? Okay, is Emily Clunk here? No? Okay, I'll just read this off. Anne is also not here tonight, so it says, "My kids love the elephant and the piggy books, and this reminds me of the time with my lads. The stories are always so cute and funny. The accuracy and detail is spot-on and shows the personality I like. The added 3D effect as well." Great job. All right, the next one is by Oliver. Oliver's here, come on up, and his piece was picked by Tom Grosskopf. I guess that, I'm bad with names.
Okay, so what I'm actually gonna mention about this, this is lost art. I went to school for architecture. When I went to school, and this is a perspective drawing, we still did everything pen and paper, okay, pencil, paper, and I don't see this anymore, and it's all done by computers nowadays, so to actually see somebody do a perspective drawing like this of buildings and stuff, I fell in love with it, so it was an awesome job. Thank you. I'm gonna give that to you.
All right, excellent. Next, we have Adriana Hebrick? I may have butchered that, I'm sorry. Something I'm bad at. All right, and then Alex is...
Right here, right here. Hey, Adriana. All right, so this piece is called Gnome Party, and it's a watercolor picture of gnomes, and I just love the different color. They each have their own little energy going, and it looks like a party. There's watercolor confetti up there, they have their own little kind of personalities, but they're all out there having a good time together, so that's why I liked it.
All right, next, we have Evie Stewart. I don't believe Evie's here, and her piece was picked by Dot Puppy? Oh, no, sorry, Samantha Peterson, that was the title, I'm sorry. I was very confused for a second. Oh, that's you.
Yeah. Kind of like everybody else said, of walking through the hallways, this one just kind of popped out at me with the bright colors. It reminded me of something that I would have made as a kid, and I thought it was really cute. If you look closely, she has her dog's name tag on there, and his name is Finnegan, and I thought that was really cute, too, so.
All right.
Okay, we're gonna go over to the other corner of the room. Thank you. This is always one of my favorite nights of the school year. I think my favorite part is getting to see the big kids. It's fun to see how much you've changed since fifth grade. Nora is the first person over in the corner, so if you want to come up here, Nora. Hers was chosen by Mr. Wopat, who I don't think is here, correct? He said that he chose this because the colors are so vibrant that it reminds me of a stained glass window. I could not stop looking at this work, and I have to tell you, Nora always does this quality of work, so it's wonderful to see you recognized for it. Next, I have Nora Belkey. However, I don't believe she's here, but Ms. Beld is, and she chose this piece.
I'm not sure if you can all see this, but it is a very vibrant turtle, and one of my favorite places in the world is going to the beach, and it reminded me of one of my favorite places and the fun, beautiful colors, so that's why I chose Nora's piece.
Next, we have a name square drawing by Craig Schaller, who also I don't believe is here, and his was chosen by school nurse Kate Romer. She says that this piece of artwork spoke to her thoughts of her own name, but it's all mixed up, and sometimes that's how we feel, mixed up. We just have to put the pieces back together. She says, "Great job to him, and thank you." I know that William is here, and William's piece, come on up, William. A Williams piece was chosen by Craig Holverson, who I do not think is here. This is a very cool piece, and Craig is of few words. He says, "This is the king of the jungle." I can't even tell you how many hours and extra minutes William put in on this piece, so, good job. All right, next up is Nala Pearl, who I don't think is here. Is Caitlin here? No. Okay. She says that even though the tones that she chose were darker, there is still the blessing of a rainbow and treasure. I love that this signifies how you can always find the good and beauty, no matter what is, no matter the, whatever the outcome, I believe is what that says, so. It's a collage piece that's drawn, but instead of painting or coloring or marker or traditional materials, it's all made of bits of pieces of magazine. I can do Caitlin's. All right, Ms. Tabelle is home with her little guy tonight, so I'm gonna keep going with some of hers. The first one I have is Kaylee Woodruff. Is Kaylee here? And hers was chosen by Julie Kamla. All right, she says that she loves the variation in the colors that you chose, and definitely how the guidelines of glue add all of that depth. This is definitely an artwork to frame and display where many can see it and enjoy, she said. Great job, good job to you. All right, next up, I have Skylar Warner, and hers was chosen by Scott Johnson.
All right, so as the rest of the team has talked about, when we get the chance to go out and race each other and pick our favorites throughout the art gallery, I do have to admit that I got, with my office being out there, I got to scout them out before everybody else did, as Mr. Brown was hanging them up, but I really liked Skylar's here, the jungle cat with the flowers in the front and the cat kind of hiding behind the leaves here, so very well done.
All right, then we have Hudson Rayburn. Oh, here he is. And his was chosen by someone I had in kindergarten named Jessa Hickey. She says that she loves all the colors. The use of both paper and paint was very creative detail. She loves it, and she also says, "Good work, Hudson." All right, Kaia Flores. You can have help, come on up. Hers was chosen by Cody Braun.
So I don't know if you all feel the same way, but this took me back to my childhood, those late winter nights after school, you got to go out and just build a snowman. You and that cold winter air took me right back to that, and also, with as young of an age, what an incredible artist. I'm really excited to see what you do in the future.
All right, and last, we have Taylor Kaiser, and hers was chosen by Brennan Anderson.
So if you can't see it, it's called "The Circle City," and the first store that caught my eye was Quick Trip on it, and it just takes me back to middle school when me and my brother and my friends would ride around town, circle around, circle around, around West Salem and go to Quick Trip, so good job.
All right, well, thank you very much for taking the time to do this. Thank you to everybody who came, and sharing your fabulous artists with us, we're very lucky to get to do what we do. This is the culmination of Youth Art Month for us, and quite a celebration, so thanks
So everyone that was here for the art presentation, you're welcome to stay, or if you'd rather leave, we can take a short recess. Thanks. Thanks, Alan. All right, that was fun. One of my favorite nights. Okay, we will get back on it, and item B under connection with the community is our board reports. Brennan, what do you have?
The baseball team won one and lost one in a doubleheader against Sparta on Thursday night. They have games tonight in Biara, Black River Falls, and tomorrow at home, and then Thursday at home. The softball team also plays tonight in Black River Falls, and then Thursday at home. The track and field teams competed at GT last Friday, where every athlete who was healthy got a chance to compete. They have their one and only home meet tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. The tennis team competed last Friday and Saturday, and then they have a match tomorrow at home. The golf team has their first Collee Conference meet tonight at Collee Golf Pool, so there's lots of home competitions tomorrow night. The district solo and ensemble festival for band and choir was on April 5th. Both band and choirs sent a total of 36 performances. The state competition will be held on April 26th here at the Hyder Center. The jazz ensemble performed at the Sony Creek Hotel on Saturday. The girls' soccer team is 2-1 on the season, and they have a game tomorrow at Arcadia and Thursday at home. Last Thursday, the high school had ACCLR Day. The freshmen and sophomores took the pre-ACT. The juniors had their job shuttle day, and the seniors had various adulting sessions throughout the morning. The whole school had different wellness sessions put on by HOSA in the afternoon. These were activities like yoga, board games, and quiet work time of reading. And then the seniors, right now, are presenting their Panther Portfolio presentations in class with the Community Presentation Day coming up on May 7th.
All right, thank you, Brennan. Not going on in the last couple months of the school year. Board, do we have questions for Brennan? You probably gotta go to Quick Trip. All right, next up is our correspondence. We've got several proclamations. April is the School Library Month. Says to recognize school libraries and the valuable role school librarians hold in the election, or education of our youth in Wisconsin, and encourage students and citizens to familiarize themselves with their library's available services. Also, the week of April 6th through 12th was National Library Week, which is to encourage Wisconsinites to visit their local library and celebrate what draws them to the library. April 5th to 12th was Week of the Young Child, which is to focus public attention on the needs of young children and their families, and to recognize the early childhood programs and services that meet those needs. The month of April is also Bilingual/Multilingual Learner Advocacy Month. Over 160 languages are spoken by Wisconsin Public School students and their families. Multilingualism is an asset that benefits students' cognitive, academic, social, and career development. April is Month of the Military Child. Wisconsin is proud to be home of approximately 10,000 school-aged children of military families. Military children face numerous and unique challenges as a result of the service of their parents and families to our country. We encourage everyone to honor our military youths and families who care and support them. April is National Autism Acceptance Month. Schools, educators, and families across Wisconsin strive to provide services and supports to ensure that all students with autism can fully participate and thrive in their education. Join students, families, and school district staff in celebrating the unique and positive identity of students with autism. April 3rd was National Paraprofessional Appreciation Day, which is to celebrate the invaluable contributions of paraprofessionals and acknowledge the impact they have on student success. This day is to recognize and honor the dedication of paraprofessionals in shaping the future of education. And finally, April 20 to 26th is And finally, April 20 to 26th is National Environmental Education Week. April 22nd is Environmental Awareness Day, where schools are encouraged to conduct a day-long program to enhance students' understanding of the environment. Every child should have the opportunity to play in the dirt, plant a tree, grow a garden, and explore. And that concludes our correspondence. So we'll next go to public comment at board meetings for Board Policy 167.3. Jen, do we have anyone? We do not. So, we'll continue on to our reports section. Item A, District Strategic Initiatives Update by Superintendent Collaborative Team. Board, do we have questions on those reports? Anything more we'd like to know? Or Ryan, do you have more that you'd like to offer?
Well, I'm gonna volley this one back to you right away, Catherine. This evening is gonna be the last evening that we have two of our board members with us. Bob has served for three years on the board, and Sean has served for six years on the board. And this is gonna be the last evening that we're gonna get to hear Brennan give a student update. And so Brennan and Jessa both have served over this past year with their services. And with that, we have, we have some acknowledgements and some certificates and a plaque for all of them. So, go ahead and call up who you wanna call up, and we'll go from there.
Fantastic. Brennan, would you like to come up? We have a word for your service, and then a thank you from the district, so we appreciate your time on the board. And Bob Menard.
Thank you so much, sir. It's been a pleasure to serve with you.
Gav.
Thanks, buddy. Appreciate you.
And before you three take off tonight, we need to make sure I get a picture, so. Other things that have been going on last week, and I wanna thank those board members that did attend those La Crosse County meetings with me last Monday evening. We were at the La Crosse County Board meeting as the West Salem School District did put forward a proposal to purchase a portion of that county farmland. And then we did also attend the Executive Committee meeting that next, on Wednesday morning. The La Crosse County Board at this time has decided that the land is not for sale. However, you know, we're gonna keep up the communication just to ensure the fact that, you know, as the years keep going forward that we can preserve our campus concept here throughout the district because it does, you know, provide a lot of financial efficiencies for us. And so we will stay on that, and there'll be updates when we have county meetings and whatnot going forward with that. As you probably heard, not only from Brennan, but through Alyssa's report to the board as well, testing across the district, it will conclude this week. So, so the couple weeks of testing, I always remember growing up, we heard about 16 Days of Glory, referring to the Olympics. But it's kind of the same thing here with, with testing as we, as we went into April. We do have policy updates that are coming forward, and I know the Policy Committee will talk about that with legal updates today. And I don't know if Justin wants to share any, any bit about this, but Justin and myself and Mr. Braun got to go to Fort McCoy as we have a student that will be graduating from the Challenge Academy. And so we had got to spend the, the morning and early afternoon with him and got to have some lunch. So I don't know if you wanna share anything, Justin, or...
Yeah, we've got a student participating in the 54th class at Fort McCoy. Classes there run either basically first semester or second semester. So the student started in January, late January, and they'll be finishing up in June. We got a chance to hear about the Challenge Academy program, which wasn't new. They, Mr. Braun and I had been out there before. It was, I think, new to Mr. Reber, but just a great opportunity to hear about another option for students who maybe struggle with the traditional high school setting. But certainly the highlight for us was seeing our student out there. He was able to give us a tour of their barracks, of their, the mess hall, the senior hall, and just to see the, really pride he had on his face from the achievements that he's gotten so far was, was a really cool thing, so.
Thank you. And then finally, as we talk about with our mission, to serve with passion, our middle school staff and students are gonna be out on Wednesday with our annual community cleanup efforts. So, when, when you see a bunch of middle schoolers out helping to clean up from the winter that we hopefully are over now, that's because it's the annual middle school community cleanup effort.
All right, fantastic. Ryan, board, do we have questions? All right, if no questions, next up is the CISA4 Board of Control Report. I have that. We met Wednesday, April 2nd at CISA4 in West Salem. We recognized two CISA board members who are no longer, but are gonna be serving on their local board, so that means they are also not eligible to serve on the CISA board. So Brad Dobbs from Black River Falls and Jim Wright from... Now it escapes me.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I should've jotted that down. Someplace north. We approved our vouchers and financial statements for the months of February and March. We didn't meet in March due to weather. We also approved new business, retirement of the Wish Center Director, approving personnel contracts for a deaf and hard-of-hearing part-time employee and a school counselor that's also a part-time employee. We approved our dental insurance renewal, and we also approved a large purchase for new conference room chairs. The conference room chairs in the main conference room were 25-plus years old, and so it was time for that replacement. We also approved a raise increase for CISA4 employees. We approved a handful of Neola policies. And we also discussed the CISA4 Annual Convention Meeting and Agenda, which would be June 4th for that information meeting and reorganization. We approved our Agency Administrator, Administrator Report. We discussed our Administrator Contract under Closed Session. And our... Of note, there's a new board member gathering, April 22nd, at CISA4 for anyone who's interested, or I guess current members could attend also, but it's geared toward new members. So I sent that information to Trish and Ben. Paul included in his report information on the local districts, or the districts in CISA4 who went to referendum on April 2nd. Several of them passed for operational, but there was about four that did not. Noted the, there's a paraprofessional summit that will be held on August 12th at CISA4, and registration is open now. Paul attended the WASB Day at the Capitol that was held on Wednesday, March 12th. The CISA4 region had several districts in attendance. They had an opportunity to meet with representatives and discuss issues related to education. And then Paul also noted about state news, the Joint Finance Committee is hosting hearings throughout the state. You might have heard about them. There's another one coming up, April 29th, at the Technical College in Wausau. And our next Board of Control meeting is Wednesday, May 7th. Questions? All right, our next report is for Business Operations Committee. Tom.
Okay, so we went over three items. One was CISA4 contracts for '25-'26 school year. The other was budget adjustments for '24-'25 and budgeting staffing for '25-'26. Those are gonna be discussed in the Discuss, Consider, and Take Action later on here. So I'm not gonna get too in-depth on it, but all three of these were unanimously approved by the committee. That we should accept it when it comes to the full board here. So that is our position on the three items that we will be discussing further on.
All right, thank you, Tom. Are there questions for Tom before we move on? All right, our Policy Communication and Engagement update. Eric.
Thanks, Catherine. The Policy Committee met on Tuesday, April 1st to review what Neola labeled as Legal and Recommended, Volume 34, Number 1. It was 35 policies. So they are listed on your agenda, and they'll come up for first reading here later in the meeting.
All right, thanks, Eric. Any questions for Eric before we continue? All right, we have our Construction Project Update from ISG.
Yep, Julian is firing up the TVs, and we'll be ready to go.
All right, does that work? Okay, all right. Excellent. Thanks for having us. It was neat to hear about the art projects and seeing some of that. So as an architect, I appreciate it. I will say, my last art class was middle school, so you'd think an architect would be into art. Never took it, and actually came to appreciate it after college, of all things. So here, take, take that for what it's worth. Okay, so, big picture tonight. We wanna provide updates on both projects, elementary first. Then we're gonna go through, Gage will actually go through cost estimate on the elementary piece. Then we'll get into the high school and some updates there as well. So where we're at, we're, we're trying to get ourselves wrapped up in schematic design, we call that. Roughly somewhere between 25 and 30% design complete. Really, big picture, we wanna have the scope determined, right? So we wanna find, from getting our floor plan layout pretty close, site plan pretty close, HVAC approach, systems approach as well, as we move into the next phase after this. We've talked about this before, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time here, but really kind of the process that we've gone through is user groups that we've met with. I'll share here in just a bit, 13 different groups, staff groups that we've met with, to gather input, getting input from, taking that back to district administration, so core team. And then obviously here tonight, we wanna share that overview with the board, see what questions you have, what things that we need to maybe provide more information on, and then look for recommendations as we move forward. I'm gonna skip this one because we've talked about this before. Here's those lists of different groups that we've met with over the last couple months. So significant lists, this is between high school and elementary. So, but really, we make a strong emphasis on gathering input early on in the process. And so that way, we're gathering that feedback, it's incorporating the design from the front end. So to start off, I'll start off the elementary design update. This is the concept pre-referendum-wise, so gym addition, some support spaces in addition connection to it. Ryan will touch on it a little bit more, but what we, this just turns it, this shows the new site plan. So again, still gym addition. One thing that we did talk about is we still need to have access around that gym addition because that's how students are gonna flow to the playground, you know, as before school, things like that. I'll let Ryan talk a little bit about the actual gym layout and associated spaces. Actually, I'll, I'll jump to Keith's side.
Yeah, clicker. Yeah, so gymnasium, so focused on, on this area, so creating the corridor through the center, creating connections. So then through the gym classes throughout the day, there's still a connection between the, the two gymnasiums. We have eight basketball hoop backstops are out there, so one function through gym class, right? So each, I'll say, side court has four, four basketball hoops per, per court, but then it still allows for side court function as well as a full main court. Then we have volleyball, and still working on a number of the court markings for actual gym class as well. And then in the center, you'll see a representation for the gym divider curtain. And then throughout the space, being considered of acoustics and protection for students. So wall pads at the, underneath backstops, acoustics throughout the space. And then capacity, so the bleachers you see on both sides, about 150 people per side. And these are all three-tier bleachers that are all movable to set up for different programs and functions as well. And then something that, that we'll see in the renderings later on is creating a lot of natural light within the space throughout the entire gymnasium as well.
One thing I would just add, as we talked about it with the staff, the existing gym would really be used for the assembly-type functions. This one's gonna be used primarily for, you know, athletics or in the school day, or PE classes, I should say, activities and after-school practices. So that's one reason why you see the bleachers on the ends, is that works much, they don't really need it from a, like a school day activities, because of assembly, we would use existing gym. But the bleachers on the end works ideal for after-school or evening or weekend gym events, having those portable bleachers there. So it's typically a little bit longer, it's actually a longer gym, but a little bit narrower gym because you don't have the bleachers on the sides. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you would still have enough there to, to set that up. Yeah, yep. I think this one's 10 feet. Typically, that's the module that we work with for a corridor like that. Yeah, between the existing gym and the new gym. I would say we've done other scenarios like this and other gym configurations. That 10-foot is kind of what we planned for, and it works pretty well, so. Oh, this one? Yes, there. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yep. Any other questions on this? We'll keep... One thing that we have talked about, and I think it'll make sense as you start to see how the exterior comes together, we think the entrance on the north side for events, we'll just say like a weekend event, that probably becomes the entrance point for activities. So you're funneling everyone through that spot, and then you can say, you know, Court A, Court B, Court C, whichever, rather than trying to funnel them around and then find the right court. Yep.
And something maybe not super clear on a little larger plan is, from a structure standpoint, we'll have some bump outs near the doors, right, that'll allow for, say, some benches or something stacked. So bags can be kind of tucked, say, alongside that wall as well, so you don't have any congestion of extra things to just hanging out in that corridor, too.
I'll keep moving, just in the essence of time, unless there's a...
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, the first thing that I see, I'm assuming you guys are counting for watercoaters, could you come in here?
Yes.
Because I see them down in the lower area here, but nothing up here.
Those, I know they've been incorporated now, if they aren't shown on the updated thing.
The second question is, if you intend for the north parking lot here to sort of be the main parking area, or door here? Right there?
Yep.
Why are we doing sidewalks all the way this way?
And that, as I think, as you saw the rendering of, and then it was obvious. So originally, the existing north entrance, the thought was, hey, we're still gonna funnel everyone through here. And so based on that, we didn't want that entrance to be too significant. Once we get the rendering put together, and then the team saw like, oh, this is gonna be the activities entrance, that's now updated to be a more, so you wanna have a, yeah, you don't have a go path. They're gonna walk where they want to.
Yeah, that all-day tournament thing was a question I had about seating, so how do we come up to three hundred seats being the optimal number?
So we've, no, we've talked about Ryan and Alex, if there's anything that you would add to it. I think we've just talked about typically what you see for a youth event as far as like one court. That's, that seems appropriate based on the discussion we had with the group.
The current gym?
I don't know off the top of my head, but it would be more than, more than that. For the student assembly.
The whole school with all the kids can fit in the north side of those bleachers. You can put the whole school in there. And when we have, when we have, which right now is like seven hundred. And then when you have.
For a youth tournament like this, typically it has the game come up, rotate, kind of rotate in. So it's enough for a team, you know, family or fans to come in, and they can rotate back out and wait in the commons where they're actually.
I think, and then, I mean, then you use those big bleacher areas if you're going to kind of set up shop as a family. I know that's a common thing that we do right now because we're going to live in it. Yeah, you set up a little area, store your stuff in the bigger bleacher area or out in the commons, and then just rotate in.
If you notice me, I'm just speaking. Just been there, just been there. You go to a high school, and I just, I know of one that I used to attend, there's no more than a hundred seats in one of those areas.
I hate it.
What people fit in, actually, I mean, but, so we're, we're sitting well as far as seating. You're not going to have in that gym, you're not going to have.
Yeah.
Good, good, all good points. I just want to jump to, I think, this view. Well, actually, Ryan, if you want to just talk to, this is probably the one area pre-referendum to where we are now. That changed a little bit, and it was really driven by when we met with the PE and athletic staff. They said, these locker rooms, they're used as storage, like, can we better utilize them? So, Brian, I'll let you kind of talk through what we kind of recommended or where we would recommend going there with this.
Yeah, so as Kevin mentioned, a lot of it was kind of site discussion, actually walking through the space when we were on-site for the user groups, evaluating the number of plumbing fixtures we needed to serve our new space as well as make sure, you know, the whole building had adequate plumbing fixtures from a code perspective on this side. But then really got to the discussion of repurposing the locker rooms. And then also understanding the true need, space size of the OTPT for office and their function as well. So that's where you'll see on the left in the gray side is actually repurposing existing locker room space, so recapturing some of that space to utilize it. You're able to still keep a restroom, shower needed for the elementary space, open up the space for an office and OTPT class, so plenty of space there. Actually, and then also gives them more storage that they need right on-site. And then we're actually to recapture in that area, reutilize and where the plumbing's already currently located. So we're not rerunning plumbing as far. And then on the south side, putting a lot of those offices, so now they get exterior windows for staff and student teachers along the outside. So then by actually moving that into the existing space, repurposing some of that space, because we already had to create that corridor. If you remember from the pre-ref, we already had to create that corridor, so we had to open that space up. And then now creating a lot more storage for PE staff for that, some of the outside activities, and then as well, as well for the gym space.
I would say we, because of that, originally the, basically the OT was, here, the storage kind of nearly doubled. By incorporating OTPT and a restroom into this. Just a little bit away from finding there's one locker room here, this is where the corridor is right now. I think the gym right here, and this is the other. Why are we not in the area for general storage, storage? Why are we not going with double doors? Sort of creating in bigger, two-foot doors. Two-foot, also on the mechanical and electrical. Plus, you can put door, covering these bleachers or bigger things that are there. Typically, most handle sections will go through, but it's a big cost. Yeah. So this kind of to give you a little bit of a perspective, Ryan, based on a couple of things.
Yeah, so this is a view, we're looking from the south-north, right, plant south, looking north to that corner. So you'll see the eight different backstops that are throughout the relocation of the rock climbing wall. And then at the end, it is a translucent panel, so also being cognizant of not wanting just clear glass from a glare into the gymnasium, but then getting plenty of natural light. And then you can kind of see on either end of the space would be kind of the full wall of bleachers.
We went a couple of different approaches, obviously, tried a diverse. And, but Tom, they were not done like that. We, initially, we looked at mimicking, like, working with the existing regular pattern. It's expensive to do when you think about this big of a perfect. So where we ended up as far as our recommendation, basically at that test build point. So here's where we talked about this is going to change as far as the sidewalks, the approach to that, because this will be like our activities entrance. We've made this just stand out a little bit separate from the existing building and from the new. And then over here, we can kind of simplify what is being recommended as a pre-cast, insulated panel. But by adding a little bit of size separation, a little above the test build, we don't have to mimic that exact brick pattern of the shade. We can kind of simplify this to be cost-effective. And also, we really, we're trying to be thoughtful to not make this look like the main entrance. Right, like, we don't want this to compete with the true main entrance, so trying to be. Other comments or questions, I think that's our last teleconference. Are those, all those, those? Great, like a translucent panel, trying to think, does the. Okay, so comparable to that kind of product where you're not going to get a bunch of coming into. But it brings in some. Do we kind of use these to mimic that better? You see on the building a little bit here, kind of get work together.
All right, good evening. The fun part, the numbers.
And this is, so this, so just the, the piece, the elementary process is kind of further along. All portions of the build, that one's further along, Kraus Anderson, the estimated process for the next five. So that's a gauge of work. And we'll touch base on the height.
Yep, so just again, to walk you through our process, we received the schematic design drawings from ISG. We took a day or two to do an initial review, sent them some comments for clarification, and then we got on a phone call with them and walked through everything. From there, we did our detailed takeoff to the best of our ability, given how far along the drawings are, and came up with these, the pricing that we'll share with you on this slide and the next slide that took into account. Market pricing that we've been seeing most currently using a software called Modelogix that takes similar-sized scale projects, the year that they were done. We put a percentage amplifier on that, just given inflation and market, market trends. And we are currently tracking all the tariff situation stuff to the best of our ability. So I believe this slide doesn't contain it, but if you want to go to the next slide, Kevin. The pricing for the new construction is slightly higher than the last slide because we had to throw forty to fifty thousand dollars in there for the steel and aluminum Canadian tariff that happened. So currently, this is the pricing that we have for the elementary school gym addition and renovations. And it's broken out to see the cost of construction with all the contingencies we have on top there. And then we're also tracking your owner and soft cost budgets below just to give us our, our final, final total of how much of, how much of the piece of the pie of your referendum that this project would potentially cost.
Just a couple of things to add, I would say these are just the breakup between elementary and high school. These are just rough figures, pre-referendum of the twenty-eight million, roughly seven point six towards the elementary, roughly twenty point four towards the high school. So I think that's where, if you look at that, looking at total project costs, seven point seven, budgeting, we're at seven point six. And really, the question we were looking at was, would we need to scale back the size to the larger storage area or not? I guess our sense right now would be, don't make any major changes at this point, things to be on track as far as what we.
Yeah, we would agree. And these contingencies, especially as it relates to the design contingency, as we continue to move forward in this process through DD drawing sets and then eventually CD drawing sets, that design contingency gets lower, so that'll eventually sort of come out of that, that project pricing as well.
Steel the main impact from tariffs right now, Canadian steel?
Currently, they keep turning them off and on, so.
Is there American steel?
Indiana?
There is, but they're all getting calls right now, so their, their demand's going up as well. So general conditions is the staffing of the project. Basically, what it takes for Kraus Anderson to put all the pieces in place to, to make the project happen. So job trailer, site personnel, any IT stuff that we would need, or supplies, or office, office supplies, or administration costs. Once again, we feel like we're, we're in a good spot, and this is without any proposed value engineering or anything. This is where we think it's at to date, where we are. Thank you.
Okay, high school, so this one has, it's been a lot of moving pieces. Obviously, a lot of like the elementary, as simple and straightforward as gym addition is. This one has a lot of dominos to it, right? So if you move one thing out, what do you backfill into that space? And so this is the pre-referendum concept that the team really started from. And now, as we've gotten a lot of feedback on that, I'll jump to the next one. What we want to do is just go through high level where the, how the dominos fit into, and then some of the constraints that we would be working with. And, yeah, so to provide a good update, to bring the board up to speed on this. So, Ryan, I'm going to go back up there so I can point around.
So looking at kind of the core of the first floor academic areas, these areas that are red, basically, those are just things, faces, and all, just these two are, the math are all in the basement right now. The red means we're just pre-using the space as it is now, but just with a new function. So basically now, we'd have two math here, the other three would be up here. So this is currently art, two rooms, we're converting it back into three. Ironically, it was originally three rooms, we're converting it back into that. We'll get to art on the next slide. Speech multilingual moves over here, and then down here where the current welding and metals is, replicating another science lab. So when we met with them, they said, hey, one of these, if we had a third one that's kind of comparable to these two, that would be ideal in this space, and so that's what we've been able to incorporate here. And then at-risk, sped and sped is a recommended kind of use of that remaining spaces. Ryan, maybe if you could just talk a little bit about, you've done, you've killed a lot of brain cells researching the greenhouse and just how to best position that, and also, yeah, if you just want to touch on that one.
Yeah, so we spent a lot of time, one, first with staff, right, and user groups of understanding the user space. So right now, where the science, the new science classroom is being proposed, they have an animal room, I believe it's called. But then it also kind of serves as like a secondary classroom, right, or overfill when they're making fishing poles or anything like that. So we want to incorporate enough of a space off of egg science and the new science clad room for a little bit larger headhouse. So then it can also be purposed as area for making the fishing poles or setting other things up for kind of that overfill. But then also, how do we best position that greenhouse? So we actually met with a couple of different greenhouse reps on, how do we actually get it into this courtyard? Few constraints to work with of the, of the window wells on either side. We're also butting up against existing, an existing wall. So meeting with the rep, this kind of was the best, at this point in time, the best proposed location, right? Because this actually gets us roughly within a few square feet of the current-sized greenhouse that's out there today. So it'll be, instead of a traditional peak, it's just going to be kind of a half of, it'll look like a half of a greenhouse. And it'll also kind of towards a window well in, in that space as well.
The other thing I just add, a lot of this configuration is based on code requirements, so there's a new wall here. We have to treat that as like a separate building area, so that's to have a firewall between the existing building and the new. And then we're limited on how close we can get to the other side here as well. So a lot of kind of the, just how you position it there is code-driven, and then trying to get enough space for them to be able to do the activities and curriculum and use of space that other.
Back to that guy.
Yeah.
Question, we're utilizing this space here, why are we not utilizing any of the other usable space?
So we could use a little bit more, but we're also, being that we have to add that firewall there, we also want to be thoughtful for like in egg science and some of the other rooms that have windows, right? So maximize as much as we can as far as square footage, but not also take up all the windows on that side either. So we could kind of grow and shrink this more, but that was part of the intent of kind of positioning this area.
Basically, just south of this.
Let me jump in on that. Have you guys looked at a, sort of just a bed out of curiosity for a glass dome roof over that whole area?
We tried to find a couple of vendors, and so far, we've not been successful on that. We've reached out to, I think, two that we found that we have seen, seen it done, just haven't been successful in that. I do think we would end up having to basically, we covered it then, that would all be a new fire area. So we'd have to do firewall all the way around that. So we're trying to get some information on just, what's the rough order of magnitude on something like that, but haven't been able to get that yet.
Now, the other thing too is with your firewall, you could probably spray the existing wall instead of build a wall, create that fire separation and go with code.
I think we'd have, yeah, we'd have to make it like structurally independent too for the firewall. So there'd be some things that we could look at with that. But very, very complex area from a code perspective in filling around. Um, so kind of just south of the, of that area, across the corridor, this is the existing woods area, just blown up and converted into. Um, art space, so basically, we kind of took it and made and would recommend make it into really two spaces. The, I'll call it the tech ed classroom would be two D art. Um, there's a space to the top that we'd like to keep as a conference room, really just gives the district flexibility. Um, we don't really need the space probably for art, and it just gives you one more room to work with on. Maybe working one-on-one with students, just gives you some flexibility. Um, we've also kind of opened this space up because we recognize you, uh, you know, likely are gonna have one staff member. Supervising the two D art, three D art space, and so trying to be thoughtful about that connection. And then creating the storage slash kiln space um in the middle here uh as well. The existing finishing room up here, kind of similar to the conference room there, our recommendation um is this three D art space. Works size wise for furniture, um. What's the term?
Pottery wheels, yeah.
There we go. Um, we don't really need to retake over this finishing room or blow these walls out. So really keep that as is, and it gives you another, it could be um a support specialist office or working one-on-one with students. Um, keep that more for those gen ed type.
Any questions?
Yeah, good point. So the stairs go up to the existing mezzanine, um that's part of the tech ed space. My thought is to leave it, it's there, it doesn't hurt it. And it would just be accessible from the.
It's still art upstairs like it is right now.
We're always looking for storage.
Right. Okay, um, this is the major building addition outside of the, of the courtyard, so. Uh, I'm gonna just jump back to the site plan, the pre-referendum site plan because it shows overall. A couple of constraints that we're really working within, uh primarily, I'll say, three areas. One is we wanna be thoughtful about the receiving area, uh we know we still need to maintain space for dumpsters. We've got some utilities back here as well, uh that we wanna be thoughtful with. Also, we're trying to be thoughtful with the south here, and in the concept, you'll see, we've actually slid the building back. Just a little bit here, so we've like narrowed this up. We just wanna be really careful not getting too close to the track. Uh, track and field events, um so I think we've given ourselves about twenty-ish, about twenty feet there. The other thing, this storage building, we've talked, um, it's really uh with, with uh district staff. There's doors on the north and south, really the south ones that are needed, the north ones just not really used. Um, so that's probably something we'll review, do we leave the door there, or do we just take that north door out and infill that? We just, there's like about four feet of elevation change from the finished floor here down to roughly the track surface. And so we just wanna make sure we don't create any water issues um on the north side of the shed. And then the long jump, triple jump, these shift, these will be shifting south as you see the overlap there. So try to be thoughtful of this edge here, we're still gonna have foot traffic uh for events, things like that. Watching, uh be careful of our track and field and north building, and then just being careful and thoughtful around this area.
Is that where the current receiving area is?
So food service would be back here, um building related deliveries would be roughly here, yep, right there.
And then there's lo- area, overhead doors for lumber and steel and things like that for the.
Sorry, say it.
There's overhead doors, you have, I'm looking at this set of plans here, you have overhead doors somewhere for the, the labs and the CTE space. Deliveries?
The, yes, yep, correct, yep. So, alright, so a lot of, so I'm gonna try and go big picture, obviously there's a lot of detail here to look at, but. Big picture, here's a couple of things that we, that we, that were, that we know from a code perspective. One is we know we need a firewall adjacent to the existing building here. We also need a firewall around this building, because again now. Instead of two separate buildings, now this is all one, okay? So, one of the exercises that we're having Kraus Anderson test out is your auditorium has fire suppression in it. That gives you some flexibility from a code perspective, and less fire rated walls, things like that. So we're doing a cost benefit analysis with Kraus Anderson. What would be the cost difference to do fire suppression in this and the existing building? Because if we do that, then we do not need a firewall here, uh we wouldn't need a firewall for all the corridor walls. So we're kind of doing a comparison, what makes the most sense, I think, is my gut reaction, I think fire suppression's gonna make sense. Um, it's just probably a matter of how far do we have to go back to get the right water supply. I hope it does, because it's gonna give us a lot more flexibility and like how much windows and things like that. We could put from corridors into classroom spaces and just like, I think the look that we want this to have, it's, it's gonna help with that. So, um, so from a layout perspective, one other thing, very top corner. Again, still having space for receiving, we know we, we need that, but we don't need a lot of space. But creating a um, a larger laundry area was something that was identified as a need. Um, not shown on here, but we also are looking at a pricing like uh additional cost. Or separate costs, it should be the right term, or additional space here as far as the building addition. Or additional freezer space, I believe was the request. Um. This, I'll just kind of work our way down um and chime in as, as, as we go through. You see business here, you remember pre-referendum, we actually had family consumer science. As we started to meet with staff. It became really clear, staff liked how the family consumer science space works. It, and there was, it really sensed to be more opportunity for collaboration between business curriculum. And what the CTE program is doing, um and also getting the, the, the store. Um, or where the shirts are pressed and created also to the store was helpful. So that's a little bit of the switch here of incorporating business here, um and then you don't have to build a new fax. Um, there's some updates that I think would be, like to be done in that space, but overall, it functions pretty good. Business definitely could use a better space.
And I think this also provides an opportunity for students to see what the business students are doing, so. Kind of positioning that, we'll call it workroom up front, so they can see what types of shirts they're making. Have other displays, right, so another display beyond just the school store, but in the, in the hallway as well.
Um, one other u- unique thing, conveniently, this building, eh, the existing autos lab. It's three inches lower than the main building finished floor, so um you actually see um. A couple of ramps here, we've simplified it down where we can do a ramp down to make the finished floor work for accessibility in just one spot. Um, the other thing that's a little unique here, it cuts off on the plan just a little bit, but. Basically, we're, we would recommend renovating this space. So we can make, uh go from fitness straight over into the existing gym space. For the corridor that connects right next to the elevator here. And then that's the existing training room, repurpose the mudroom into the training room is the concept here. It wouldn't take a lot of renovations in order to do that, um it would give the training room a much better sized space. And so we just think that's a good option and would create a much better connection over to existing gym space. Um, this area is in development still, uh we're trying to figure out, based on the fire suppression piece. Um, and just as this plan develops, what do we need for mechanical space? Generally, we like it maybe to be somewhat centralized, that probably means like somewhere here or somewhere here. You kind of gotta pick kind of one end of the autos lab. Restrooms seem to make sense somewhere right around here, uh just so you're not having to run all the, all that uh the restrooms down here. Go all the way down here to use them, so somewhere around here makes sense. Uh, this here in the back, I think, I'll, beyond the boys and girls, we're flexible, and I think this is still in progress of what that's gonna look like. Um, there was some discussion of do we need more showers there, do we not? Um, do we need an extra locker room? So I think that's still in progress of what that looks like. And then really, as we turn the corner, um the fitness area, so a lot of discussion here. How this is set up is that basically you come, if you parked in the east parking lot. And you walk along the building, there'd be a sidewalk entrance here, this is set up for after hours access. So um this set of doors could be unlocked uh for, but the inter vestibule doors, if it's early morning or whatever. Inter vestibule doors could be locked, so we can have this open access to fitness. Or we could even have access up to this point potentially for early morning for restroom access, um just as an example. Um, the fitness concept in general, uh trying to keep open space in the middle, so equipment, equipment to the two sides. Turf uh spaced in the middle is the idea. And then as you continue, oh, one other thing, pre-referendum, uh concept had the corridor here on the exterior. And what we liked about flipping it to the inside is it allowed us to make a lot cleaner. Connections back to the existing classroom um and tech ed space rather than having to kind of cut through. A um, uh potentially another class um with going from this space in through the classroom to get to the autos.
Thanks.
Steve.
I'm good.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say for the fitness too, the one thing we're kind of studying from is now we have an awesome view from the football field, right? Being able to look in from the football field, we also have the elevation change in our favor too, so actually. The glass kind of represents is like dead center on the, on the goalpost too, so being able to view. Awesome opportunity for branding as well along that, that fitness wall.
And square footage for that fitness area?
About, about five thousand square feet.
Okay.
And then really, uh this area is, is really, you know, the, the piece that has a lot of moving pieces to it, so. How we started this is we said, hey, let's figure out what zones we want. Um, from woods to building trades to metals to finishing. And what do we like about access and flow between the spaces? A lot of good discussion about, hey, we want our students to come into the, into uh classroom first and then check in after that to go into the lab. So I would just say, we feel there's, there's more constraints kind of around the perimeter of this. Um, this is feeling, you know, like it makes sense here, and this has still got, you know, work to do as far as. Exactly how, what's the flow look like in there, um and, you know, eventually down the road, what equipment, things like that. Lot of information, very complex, there's a lot of moving pieces to this, um, it's, it's, yeah, fun. Okay, I didn't, I wanna see if there's any others, so I just wanna recap that though, big picture. Um, we're gonna be working to, I guess, as a board, we'd ask for feedback on the, you know, elementary. Elementary's kind of straightforward, there's some good comments brought up. High school, the next couple of weeks, uh we'll be coming back at the end of this month. Share feedback, share thoughts, um we need to get together between now and then, totally good with that. Um, it's a lot of information that we've, you know, gathered and really appreciate Justin and his team. Of digging in, going to visit other schools and just seeing what, what seems to be working. Um, for schools and how do you integrate trades into, yep, into curriculum? Question? I impromptu speaking podium. Uh, we talked, kind of talked about this big, I'm gonna just really touch on two really big points. We'll have um another, really from a. Process standpoint, big picture, what we're looking at, continue to go through design process, we'll have another budget check for the elementary. We'd have another one for the high school as well, beyond the one that we're gonna share later this month. Um, and then big picture, the elementary, the goal would be bidding uh roughly in July, so going out, getting. Uh, general or, you know, trade package bids. Um, the high school, that one would be uh July for maybe some of like the, make like site work. Things like that, some of the early packages for a fall construction start, and then September would be the target for those remaining. So we're gonna continue to try and get feedback, um I think as we get, work towards the end of this month. We wanna just make sure we've got good alignment on where do we wanna go with all the domino pieces of this. Um, and uh, yeah, it's, get some good momentum, get some feedback and we'll keep. Question?
Go back.
Yeah. Yep.
I'm just looking at this, this is electrical and all my, whatever, all the trades. Welding seems to have a huge area, is there an opportunity to move like this down here and take a little bit of this just to give this area significantly more room? Out with so much more than just welding, yeah, this is, this seems like a huge, I don't know, do you need that bigger piece for welding?
It, and I think, so just, um, and I know may, we just met with staff again uh last week. But then metals too, we'll have like all the sheet metal, um and some of the other fabrication. Pieces of equipment as, as well, so that even as of last week, that space has shifted around a little bit to. Okay, what are all the pieces we have for welding, as well as some of the, the sheet metal tools, some of the, the presses and that sort of thing as well. It kind of opened that up, yeah.
Yeah, and I think the other thing to your point, we're gonna get more detailed on like, okay, what size things do you wanna do for finishing, right? Like what, what size things is that, um and what does the actual equipment look like? Is there, how many tables are in here, what other equipment's in here? I think you're right, we probably can grow some of these spaces. Um, once we really get into the details of what specific equipment needs to put in.
Yeah, cause even that's student storage, for example, a lot of that now, like in the woods and even in the metal side, is like along the wall, be more of like a. A cubby, right, we saw examples on our school tours of inner room, so giving that as a, as an option, but. Um, after meeting with staff, more of, I'll say, a wall, wall product and, and cubbies.
Uh, the one, one th- other kind of constraint thing, we've got two overhead doors placed here, it's kind of. Uh, avoids the transformer and generator that's in the middle here, so um just so you kind of know one of the. Again, one of those constraints that we're just working within around. So, um, like I said before, there's constraints kind of around the perimeter, but what kind of fits in the flow within, flexible there. And we're really interested to see where does that, doing fire suppression of this area come back? Cause that's gonna give us a lot of flexibility in what we do with the building systems and layouts and those things like that.
Could you go back to the full context?
Yeah. This one?
Yeah. Um, we, I think we mentioned this before, but one way that people use the fitness area is lift, then use the walking track. Or some, some kind of uh, you know, um programmed workouts that include both things, so. In this design, do you see an interface toward doing that?
Jump to this side, but.
Do you see where I'm pointing?
That's the old one.
This is the old one, but it still works, so basically fitness kind of stays in that general area. And that was a staff's feedback of like, hey, this training room isn't great, can we make that corridor connection through here? And now we can go the stairs right here to go up to the walking track, so that was, I think, a really nice option. And that space here, if the corridor like we have shown now is along here, this space would be, that mudroom would work well. Or training room, um, it makes a nice, the fitness to gym, salt or walking track has a good. You'll start to see it, it kind of cuts off right here.
Yeah, and that existing training room was the mudroom for the greenhouse too, so ability to repurpose that.
Yeah, good question.
Did they bring eleven or seventeen handles?
Are there questions?
Or is it just this?
I think I just doubled down on Sean's comments. With multiple different trades and I, you know, storage moving things in. You're talking HVAC refrigeration, some of the equipment. Talking about CNC machines and some of the other stuff. Looks like roughly the same footprints been dedicated to CTE. And yeah, classrooms and some of the storage, but space is getting. I wear dressed in a whole bunch of other stuff.
Did you say you'd seen some sort of modular or adjustable walls at some of your tours? I think Justin, did you mention that? You'd seen some of that? I think Justin, did you mention that? You'd seen some of that? Or something where it was sort of flexible spaces?
Yeah, what was this school that had, they had like a whole HVAC system in a sense kind of mounted on a...
Yeah, so the HVAC program we saw was, everything was on wheels, including student workstations, which basically was like a bathroom cabinet size, but on wheels. And when, when it wasn't in use, it was basically pushed along like the top wall there, and then they would pull it out into the, the bigger using, bigger assembly space there to actually...
And then Tulsa East, so like they had a building trades area like this, but then they kind of incorporate some of the plumbing and electrical. They would start, you know, foundation, build CMU foundation right on the concrete, right? Put a good surface and then they would build a little bathroom, right? So they could do plumbing, electrical, but it was, and then also part of the woods by building wall, doing sheet rock. Opportunity for masonry as well, so they kind of used a flexible space like that too.
What is best practice of what I, I, or I, or classroom? How do you, permanently tie your space with forage?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we'd want to be thoughtful of, of the cost to one person to finish all work, while having finishing is common, because we do a lot of our school projects that have it. The storage, I would say that totally could move around, but maybe you want the one project storage closer to the classroom as far as grabbing materials, things like that. The other project storage, yeah, I would say project storage that could be flexible move around if it was kind of a desire to say, hey, we, we did this, but we want to just, give us flexibility down the road for one, one program gets bigger or smaller. But also, I think, trying to be thoughtful of recognizing your supervision. So how do we maximize that? Think about staffing supervision.
Some of the spaces where you said you put the finishing, there, you have reserve underings and stuff like that?
Yeah, not with, but definitely. Basically what it is, whatever size, single or double doors on each side, and then fade, put whatever in there you want.
Other question, I know that costs us a little bit, but knowing that the auto shop is where the auto shop is, and, and we have the welding, but we got a computer lab right outside of the auto shop. And I'm thinking if I'm coming out of the auto shop, I might be coming out greasy hands, stuff like that or whatnot. I mean, would it make sense to flip and keep the classroom and any or classroom computer lab by each other and move the metals and welding closer to like the auto shop and flip that? Look, I think that's something we can talk both the user groups.
Yeah, a little goal just with like this, I think, yeah, we can look at both. One option we're providing to is like providing the, each teacher an opportunity to have like check in at classroom and then go to lab space was at least, you know, the initial thought of some of this, right? But hey, what, does that afford us different opportunities by flipping those as well?
The other thing I'm just questioning Ryan is, I don't know where we're at with sponsors or anything like that. Is there ability to carve out certain areas of on this plan to be, you know, this is X business that is, you know, sponsoring this area or something, but that...
I think there's opportunities for that.
I know, but, but then I look at this, like I, I would see like in the corners, you know, this, this, but there's gonna be a door here, same with here. So then, you know, it's kind of all along this wall or something like that. Just, so you're thinking about that of carving out specific spaces or specific businesses to sponsor.
Companies that want to work.
I could talk this all night. Sean, I just ask, do you have, are you, like a, like a block that they're gonna purchase?
If we have an area within there that's, say we have...
Some type of donor recognition.
Would you want that, I, I agree, we saw that a couple of places. Would you want that tacked in the back where not everybody could see it, or would you want it up on the corridor where like the...
I mean, visible from the track.
Well, or the front of the, I'm not sure there's a corridor that's gonna be visible from the track, but if it was up kind of by the auto shop classroom, can I give you a point to that corridor that just comes out, yeah, right in there? And somewhere in there where it's openly visible, boy, is that's, I, I see what you're saying, but that's on the back wall.
Yeah, I don't know where it goes. I'm just thinking, somebody needs to think about this, that if we're R soliciting them, that we have to think about that when we design it to get the most exposure as possible.
Yeah, we could probably share a few example photos I know we took at our tours, because a lot of them had banners. I thought Verona did something cool. They actually had banners that highlighted like welding, you start out with this, but then here's your op, what's your opportunity within the welding field too?
Yeah, high traffic area.
Yeah, you're right too, Sean. It just depends on what you, who would want to see that stuff.
Yep.
Hey, the, what was close east we were at, had kind of what you're talking about, kind of a banner for an employer on the inside, and maybe it's a boat, so that means like, oh, I, I can do this as a career there, correct? But yet, our thankfulness for them coming to the table with us is a little bit more public.
Not just bring it up to support to be kept in mind when diagnosed.
Can be in the community of yours.
Catherine, anything else you'd like to?
My brain needs to digest this, I think, so nothing more tonight. Others? Do you have questions that we haven't asked? Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Thanks, Gage.
Think about that stealing a loom of the US company.
We'll do, we'll do. Trust me, we're talking about it every day.
I'm sure. Okay, our consent agenda includes manage the regular board meeting of March 24th, 2025, invoices to be paid, co-curricular recommendations. I don't, was there anything in there? Hiring a 1.0 FTE third grade teacher, resignation retirements, and donations. Our donations tonight are American Red Cross Student Scholarship Award donated $1,500. P and P Productions Incorporated donated $64 to the ASH activity account. The Random Acts of Kindness Fund received a donation of $20 from Cynthia and William Ines. And we also received a donation of $1,000 from an anonymous donor for the athletic scholarship. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, our consent agenda is carried. Well, next move on to discuss, consider and take action if appropriate regarding strategic initiatives. Item A is our CISA four contracts for the 25-26 school year.
Yes, in your packet you can see a contract from this current school year, 24-25, and then one for the 25-26 school year. There's one additional item that we need to add to the 26, to the 25-26, which would be item 460 on page, found on page seven, or page 39 of your packets, excuse me. We did change up some software systems that we're using for IEP development and within our pupil service department, and that cost of item 460 is $3,094, which would increase our CISA four contract this year up to $213,186. This is a substantial decrease from what it was a year ago, and we'll talk about that a little bit further depending on the recommendation coming from the board. Last year, our CISA contract was $300,111, and with that late addition here, we're looking at $213,186.
I'll make a motion to approve the CISA four contracts as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's carried, and we will go on to item B, which is our college career and life ready video scholarships. So subcommittee of myself, Bob Goldbeck and Caitlin reviewed those videos, and it was a difficult decision, but we did come to four winners, which I've shared with you and Ryan, so they'll be notified at the scholarship night.
Yep, and all, and all we need from the board here is the approval of, it'd be the $2,000 to be distributed to the four winners of the CCLR scholarships.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Bob. Any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those are approved. Next is item C, budget adjustments for 2024, 2025. Sean?
Thank you. What you have in your packet, you'll have a notice of change for the general fund and special projects fund. As you notice or remember that within the DPI rules, when you approve your original budget for the year, when we go through the annual meeting, the only changes that you, that the board can, when we make changes to the budget, the changes that have to come before you is if we move between two different function levels. So the two-digit function, so if it's going from a 1.1 to 1.2, that would need your approval in order for this to happen. And the adjustments that were related to these are because we received additional Common School Fund mo, funding of $43,106. And also within these changes, the two, which are the highlighted ones, is we had some federal funding for the Title I grants that we needed to adjust within the function codes that met the guidelines that is provided for us by DPI. So those are the major changes within it. The second section down below is the special projects fund. As you noticed, we have activity funding, which relates to high school band and a lot of the additional sports, and this is to recognize the contributions that we've received and also moving funds around to, in order to spend those funds within the appropriate function items.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's carried. Item D, budgeting staffing for 25-26.
At the business operations, before this meeting, we had discussed two possible staffing additions. One of them, we revisited the FCE teacher at the high school. The other one was an addition. After reviewing our CISA scholarship, CISA scholarship, excuse me, our CISA contract, we felt that it would be in our district's best interest to revisit of whether or not to hire out OT services and do that through CISA, or if the cost benefit was enough in which we could pursue hiring our own OT here within the district. With the increased rising cost of contracting that out through CISA, we made a proposal to the business op of searching to find our own OT to bring that here, which would be a substantial cost savings to the district.
My only question reading that was, is it 0.8 versus 1.0, and if it's realistic to find somebody that wants to do 0.8 versus 1.0?
It's an excellent question. We did have conversations, reviewed IEPs, reviewed minutes within those IEPs, and, you know, I, we feel like we can get some qualified candidates that would search out and apply for that position at that rate. So, you know, we're looking at some, as you can see from within your packet, hiring that service out through CISA would be $102,000. Being able to go through our own with salary and benefits, we're looking at possibly $67,000, so.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the budgeting and staffing for 25-26 as presented to and recommended by the business ops committee.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there additional questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes. And now, item E, first reading of legal and recommended policy updates. There are a lot of them, I will not read them all.
There are 35 of them.
It looks like a similar list to what CISA did recently.
Yeah, it could be. So these are legal and recommended changes that come forward from Neola, as I mentioned earlier. Policy committee met on April 1st. Thanks to Jen and Ryan for all the prep work you did to get the packets ready and highlight the policies. Had some pretty good discussion in the policy committee, but are ready to bring these forward for first reading.
Well, since this is my last meeting, I was on the policy committee, I think it's really appropriate that we read through them.
All right, you want to take policy 100?
Only if you do the reading, Bob.
Start with 2210, since that was one of the ones that we're looking and pushing forward for our first reading.
Yeah, you didn't get a second for your motion, by the way, so I guess that will be the end of that.
I guess we'll skip that time.
In all seriousness, thanks to the policy committee for doing all this work. I know it takes a lot of time. Is there anyone that wants to make a motion to accept these for first reading?
I'll make a motion to accept them for first reading.
Thank you, Bob.
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Gee, the motion is second. Is there additional discussion, questions? All right, all in favor to approve the list of policies for first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have approved those. Next is our list of to-do items and information requests. Do we have anything that we want to have added? Or Ryan, is there anything we should talk about that's on the list that's changed?
Took off, obviously, prepare legal and recommended policies, so we just took care of that first reading. One of the things that came up during our policy committee meeting was, you know, just a process for district communication. When, when some things come out, there's some things that I feel like as a district, we've gotten much better at with communication, but I think there's some gray area and things that we could do a little bit better. So looking forward to have a further discussion at a board development meeting, probably during the summer when... uh, at a board development meeting, um, probably during the summer when Sam and I can start to wrap our heads around some of this stuff after we get through, um, the end of the school year. So.
Okay. Anything else on the to do items? If not, that will end our live stream and we'll move into a closed session where the board will discuss, consider and if appropriate, take action pursuant to Wisconsin statute 99A51C, concern employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility regarding the evaluation of the superintendent. May I have a motion?
I'll move that we go into closed session.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Jen, judge your roll call.
Bob?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Five, M?
Aye.
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 John?
Aye.
All right. Sounds good.